Welcome, everyone, to the November 20th, 2023. We are continuing an earlier session where we went successfully into executive session for two of the four topics. The two of the four is the first and the last on the agenda list. And we will convene, call to order, and verification of court. We have all five trustees. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For public comment tonight, it has been past practice to call up, we call them on deck, so we can kind of efficiently get through. And there's a red line next to the cameras, so if people can keep their hands to themselves and wait patiently on the red line, that would be appreciative and respectful of those around you. Okay. We shall do that action item now, or we'll just... Yeah. As discussed, so the executive session items that we did go in on, there was discussion, and the board would like to take action on one of those action items. And we didn't feel comfortable doing it down there when nobody was watching, because it's supposed to be done in a public session. So this is still the same meeting, and so we're doing it now for you all to see. And so if there's someone who wishes to make a motion to proceed as discussed during executive session, please say so moved.
So moved?
Second.
Trustee Corkle and trustee Wagner, second. So nominated is trustee Corkle, second is trustee Wagner. Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's going to discussion and hearing none, since we had... We're... Let's see. So all those in favor?
Chairman McKenzie, I think the motion would be coming out of the executive session under this first item would be that you're directing the attorney, you're authorizing the attorney to proceed as directed under the first executive session pro.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're gonna reset. So gentlemen, if you'd friendly take your first and seconds back, and if somebody would still, are you willing to say that again for us, sir? So direct the attorney to proceed as directed, I believe?
Yeah, under the action item for discussion decision regarding the litigation that we also had with insurance panel, that you're directing the attorney to authorize, you're authorizing the attorney to proceed as directed.
Thank you, sir. And trustee Corkle, I believe you're still?
Yeah, go ahead and amend it, that's fine.
Thank you, sir. And trustee Wagner, you going with the second? Thank you, sir. So it's not an amendment, we've just backed it out, and we're just starting fresh. And skipping discussion, as this is an executive session, we just had plenty of it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing three, four, that would be four. The motion passes. Thank you, and we have proceeded to go forward. Moving, we've done pledge of allegiance, we're moving to public comment. So Deborah Rose, you're here to talk about agenda policy, please step to the microphone. There's Robert Shepler, please proceed to the red line, and please state your name and your agenda item.
Thank you. NIC policy defines stalking as harassing surveillance, willful and malicious with the intent to place other people in reasonable fear for their safety. Further, the policy defines stalking as repeated following harassing or intimidating of another person by various means that would cause a reasonable person to be seriously emotionally distressed. Violations of these policies are taking place on NIC's campus during board meetings. Allowing individuals with cameras in the media bullpen lacking valid media credentials is untenable and places NIC at risk of litigation. Individuals like Jeremy Loken, who might lack proper media credentials, provide their videos to individuals who use them to intimidate, harass, and instill fear for one's safety and those they target. You have an obligation to those who enter this campus to ensure their safety and that they are protected from nefarious intent by those with ill will on their minds. You are all aware, Mr. Loken and others who video have been using them, including by Mr. McComber and Mr. Wagner, to intimidate, harass, and threaten those who visit this campus and address this board. Your role as trustees has value only to the extent you attribute value to the life, safety, and freedom of others by offering respect, friendship, civility, and compassion. I am asking you to enforce these policies 303, 05, and 06, to take steps to ensure visitors are safe and free from harassment and harm. And when someone requests they do not want to be videoed by non-credentialed individuals, I'm asking the board to ensure their requests be honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Shepler. That was under policy. Please state your name, and Karen Shepler is on deck.
My name is Robert Shepler, and I'd like to speak about some of the policy updates. First, I'd like to commend Mike Wagner and Terry Zimmerman for their work on the policy updates. I know you've worked very hard, and while we don't always see eye to eye, it is appreciated that we're making those policies current and correct for North Idaho College and the citizens in this community. However, there are some problems with some of the current policies as well. The updates or the continued changes on the role of the committee chair violating policies, the faculty senate pointed out last month that the assumption of some of the roles that Chair McKenzie has taken are violating multiple policies in NIC's book, violating both state laws and also their own policies. This is also causing problems with the accreditation. The accreditation states that the biggest issue we face is a dysfunctional board. And you've had a year, gentlemen and lady. And dysfunctional is a very good word to describe it, it hasn't changed. In fact, in many ways, it's gotten worse. It's many times been just, let's kick the can down the road. We've lost faculty, we've lost administration, we've lost a lot of staff, it's cost us and students and our reputation. And the only piece that I've seen addressed in the last 12 months by this board is let's change conferences and join a new sports league, and also authorize $2.3 million in spending to do that unregulated. I'd also have one additional question. There is an investigation that's been ongoing, and I'd like to know how much that investigation has it cost, and is this in addition to the investigation that was done into Dr. Swain last year by Art McComber and the hundreds of thousand dollars we've wasted so far? Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Shepler and Teresa Boronpol, you're on deck.
Education at its core is about behavior modification, gaining skills and acquiring information to be better citizens, to do better for ourselves, our families, and our communities. Social science tells us that for society to be successful, we have to stop maladaptive behaviors immediately and correct them, and interrupt them if at all possible. For the last year, I've tried multiple avenues to communicate with this board. Last month, after careful consideration, I opted to use the interrupt and correct modality. In doing so, I spoke out of turn, and if in doing so, I put any shadow at all on the work that the subcommittee has done, I apologize deeply. You've shown that you are capable of doing what's necessary as a board subcommittee. Sitting in that chair last month, as I watched the board chair defecate all over your work, I could not sit quiet. The chair of a community educational organization based on community outreach and support took a vehement stand against being in other community support organizations. In my mind, this is tantamount and akin to treason. What we haven't seen from the chair is any acknowledgement or understanding of his role as trustee or board chair, or any behavior that is necessary for learning. You've shown no proficiency. So I ask the board this evening to act and remove him as chair and send him home before it's too late.
Thank you for coming down. Teresa Boronpol with Michael McGowan on deck.
The role of a board chair is to keep an organization on track toward fulfilling its mission. At its core, the role involves facilitating board meetings, exemplifying strong leadership, practicing effective governance, and ensuring the integrity of the board. Unfortunately, this has not been the example shown to us by Greg McKenzie. An example, at the April 26th NIC board meeting, the board discussed the formation of a policy committee. Two trustees were too busy to participate, which I can appreciate, but two trustees stepped up to the chair's request. Trustees Zimmerman and Wagner agreed to spend time away from their families and personal commitments in order to fulfill the important work that was being asked of them by the board chair. Chair McKenzie, you were so happy with the 5-0 vote for the commission, I thought it was actually your bedtime. To ensure the integrity of the policies committee, or policies work, you stated, quote, "I want to ensure the expectations of the community and everybody. Any two trustees can spontaneously get together like this and improve something, especially in coordination with a willing president," and can sit down and hammer out these things to get rid of any perceptions of coordination, to just do the best way we can. That's what we're putting this board, that's why we're putting this to a board vote. So then why, Chair McKenzie, did you impugn the integrity of the policy committee on October 25th? From an audience perspective, it looked like you didn't like the work that the committee did, and in fact, after stating that two trustees can work together for the betterment of the college on April 26th, on October 25th, you said, quote, "The public cannot see the formation of policy because it's happening in the dark." Even though the committee meetings had been done in coordination with the NIC team, many meetings had been conducted with the consultants that you agreed to hire so that we don't lose our accreditation, and some of the meetings were even held in a public forum. You didn't like the work of the committee, Greg, so you chastised those who gave of their time, something that other committee members were not willing to do, and suggested that they were up to something nefarious. Suggesting your board is full of trustees that would deceive the public because the policy didn't reflect what you wanted, Chair McKenzie, is an embarrassment. You won't say it, but trustees Wagner and Zimmerman, thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Michael McGowan. And Wendy Smith, you're on deck.
Good evening. Michael McGowan, Post Falls, speaking on enrollment and accreditation, hopefully for the last time. So I've mentioned in the past reasons, which I think are definitive, that the declining enrollment at NIC should not be considered as a negative in the accreditation equation. I'm not going to beat that dead horse again, but I want to address something that Dr. Swain has mentioned a couple of times in the past, saying that enrollment is important so far as state funding is concerned. Well, I like you, Dr. Swain, there's something about you that I like, just so you know that going in. Nothing personal, but I disagree. Looking at the SBOE website and the protocols they have there for funding, it's pretty clear that things adjust in a very manageable way. Obviously, the fewer students you have, the less funding you'll get, the more students you have, the more funding you get, so that's not really a problem. Now, I'm just going to ad lib here and make a statement or a comment about other comments that have been made tonight. I just see a lot of... Can we just be honest about something? This is all about ideology, right? I mean, we see all these complaints about things from super petty issues to things that are rather important, but it really comes down to ideology, doesn't it? So I'm here as a conservative to give the conservative voice of this community, to create a conservative voice, let's say. I'm just Joe Blow. I wouldn't be here if I didn't think I had some kind of responsibility to counteract the fact that conservatives in general just are mind-your-own-business kind of people. So I think I represent a lot more people than the others that have spoken tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. Wendy Smith.
Hi. Thank you so much for having me. This is my first board meeting at NIC. However, I'm a parent in North Idaho, and I've had a couple kids attend North Idaho College. I'm a citizen and a taxpayer, and I do very much appreciate this college for what it offers to the community. The thing about it is that people like me are mostly staying home cooking dinner for our kids and keeping the home fires burning, and we're not always able to come down here and speak at a public meeting. But I do attend occasionally online, and I try to keep up with what's going on in the college, and I notice the same people that come and speak using language that's derogatory and behavior that's inappropriate. And at the last meeting, it was the October 25th, 2023 business meeting, that a citizen was here, kind of dancing around, waving arms, fluffing hair, and outright lying about the purpose of her behavior. So I want to say that I represent the law-abiding citizens of Cootney County, of which there are many, and I noticed, thank you, I noticed that Chair McKenzie was very polite and appropriate in addressing the situation, so I wanted to say for the thousands of other people in this community, thank you. And also, I noticed trustee Banducci, you weighed in, and it felt like it was very appropriate in trying to diffuse the situation, and also trustee Zimmerman, you spoke up to. And then in the last 10 seconds, I want to say President Swain, I was so disappointed and disheartened that you seemed to condone the behavior that was disruptive to the board meeting, because it would be directly...
Thank you for coming down. Celebrating success, Dr. Swain, would you like to introduce our math contest?
Yes. Damien Kares and Suzanne Bromley are here to present. And I'm not, I don't, I don't want to steal their thunder, but last year at the math competition, we had about 90 students, is that about right? And you're sure, I think we had 120, so significantly more participants, so it was great to see, like, a lot of high school students here, maybe even some junior high students here, participating in the math competition. And I'll say, Coeur d'Alene High School did a great job, ran away with it, so.
Ready?
Whenever you're ready.
Is that PowerPoint on? We're good? Okay. It is a great honor to stand here in front of the college community and talk about the NIC math contest for area high school students. On November 14th, we did our 40th annual, and tonight, we celebrate the success of some of our potential future students. We checked earlier this semester and found that 28% of those participating in last year's math contest were enrolled in NIC classes this fall. This annual event is brought about by the dedicated work of the NIC math department, and we look forward to it every year. To start off our presentation, I thought you might like to solve one of this year's problems and match your skills with the contestants. Five horses of matching ability named May the Horse Be With You, Passing Wind, Lost My Cowboy, Red Hot Philly Pepper, and Apple Bottom Jeans run a race. What is the probability that the first, second, and third place horses are Red Hot Philly Pepper, May the Horse Be With You, and Lost My Cowboy in that order? Relax, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, I won't actually make you solve it. If you want to take it home and play with it, the answer is B, 1/60th. There are a lot more questions, of course, where that came from. Since this year was our 40th contest, I thought I would show you a complete history in winners. As I talk, the PowerPoint will show our math contest wall of fame, as beautifully photographed by geology instructor Bill Richards. Overall, the individual portion of the math contest is written in two parts. The first 20 questions to be completed without a calculator, and the second 25 questions where a calculator is allowed. The second part also includes an open-ended tiebreaker question to be graded only in the event of a tie. After the individual tests are complete, four students from each school are chosen by their coach to compete in the team competition. The team competition is watched by all and is quite a lively event with some good old-fashioned school rivalry and some great fun. We have a team, we have team and individual winners for both Division One, which is the larger schools, and Division Two, the smaller schools. We also divide the students into senior and junior, which really means non-senior categories. Since its beginning, the math department has strived to make the questions used reflect the standard high school curriculum. Currently, this means addressing the K through 12 state standards for mathematics, which are algebra, functions, linear quadratic, and exponential models, modeling, geometry, and statistics and probability. We also try to stretch students and challenge those taking calculus by including a few Calc I and Calc II questions. This year, we had 104 contestants from nine area high schools, and I would like to take a moment to thank the NIC Foundation for helping us find a sponsor, and the Spokane Teachers Credit Union for sponsoring our event. Our participants this year, from Division Two, we had Classical Christian, Cootney, STEM Charter, and Timberlake; and for Division One, Coeur d'Alene Charter, Coeur d'Alene High, Lake City, Lakeland, and Post Falls. And now for this year's winners. Division Two Junior category, third place, Rush Gustafson from STEM Charter; second place, Amy McCune from Timberlake; and first place, Blaze Crombean from Classical Christian. Division Two Senior category, third place, Elaine Park from STEM Charter; second place, Michael Bell from Classical Christian; and first place, Elijah Freeman from STEM Charter. For Division One in the Junior category, Coeur d'Alene High School swept the board; third place, Isaac Thorpe; second place, Atlas Astro; and first place, Adeline Smith. And for Division One, the Senior category, third place went to Henry Depew from Coeur d'Alene Charter; second place, Isabella Lee from Coeur d'Alene High; and first place, Lucas Scarborough from Coeur d'Alene High School. And the team awards, Division Two STEM Charter took the award, and for Division One, Coeur d'Alene High School. I am... I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any. Can I do that?
Are any of the kids here tonight?
They aren't, they're not our students yet, so otherwise, I would have dragged them kicking and screaming along, but...
We did offer them all scholarships to come here, because they're the, you know, they're the kind of students that we really want to have, and so they were all offered partial scholarships to attend.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Constituent reports, Michael Oberman with ASNC.
Good evening, Board. Members of the community, President Swain, myself as well as my vice president are participating in No Shave November in honor of Men's Health Awareness Month. As you could see, I'm a little unshaven, but yeah, we really care about the topic, and it's been quite a rough road, growing a beard for the first time. The student government is putting on St. Asnic. So earlier this month, we asked members of the college who are in need to put in a request form, and they put in a request form for their children to get gifts. And downstairs is a giving tree, so you all are invited to take an ornament off the giving tree, and then you could drop it off in the office of the student government, off to Matt Heiler. Instructions are on the tag, so yeah, it's a really good event that we put on, and we really love giving back to the community that way. Also, you may have seen a flyer, it's for the Fall Campaign Food Drive. It lists items such as rice, pasta, canned foods, and others. So the NIC food pantry is a really good way for students who may need help to get those items, so if any members of the community would be so willing, it would be nice to have them donated. Onto the Asnic report, one of my senators and I showed up to the candy handout at the Parker Center, and that was a really good time. We got to see a lot of members of the community. Their children had really neat costumes, so that was super nice, and I got to meet a lot, that was my first time down at the Parker Center, so it was really cool meeting all of those people. The President's Walls Project is almost finished. We're just looking for three past Asnic presidents, but we're going to be hanging up the old student government pictures of the old presidents back out there again. We were having a hard time finding picture frames, but we finally found some that kind of match enough, so yeah, so I hope that around the beginning of next year is when we could have that up. We're working on a suggestion box for students to suggest what they would like to hear, like us to hear, whether that be something about they would like us to advocate for them, or whether it just be some project, such as like the Hammock Project. It's just really a way for us to get more input from students. We're putting a project together to better advertise the resources on campus that are funded by student fees. That could be the Math Education Center, we have free health counseling, and other things that not a lot of colleges offer, so I feel like it's very helpful to make sure that those are advertised and students know what's available to them. Yeah, we had our leadership retreat last Saturday. It was really fun, so we all went to an escape room, kind of figured out our leadership styles, and then all went out to lunch afterwards, speaking about it. It was a really good time, and yeah, I really enjoyed it. Other than that, that's the end of my report. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Did you escape?
We did escape, yes. So Escape Games CDA, they, they're awesome, they were phenomenal to work with. Like, the manager came in, we were like just about to finish, and then the timer went off, and then he was like, "Oh, I'll give you guys a couple extra minutes," so. That was, that was super nice of him, because we were on the last part anyways.
Hearing, oh, trustee Wagner? Hearing none, thank you.
And then I would like to make one last comment. Speaking with the student government, they said that they would like me to speak about some things we noticed over the past few months. We strongly disapprove of personal attacks against board member, board's family members, and condemn all threats made to staff, faculty, students, and administration, and the board of trustees. I hope by saying this, I do not have to repeat myself in the future, because these things should not be tolerated. All right, thank you so much, and everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Mike.
Faculty Assembly, Kathleen Miller-Green.
Chair McKenzie, trustees, President Swain, community members, my invaluable NIC colleagues, and our incredible students, happy Thanksgiving week. At the November 9th, 2003 Faculty Assembly meeting, we addressed the following items of business. First, we had our standard reports, which included information from the senate, which included the news that Chair Jason Drosch was stepping down his chair. We had reports from the Student Learning Outcomes Assessment, the SLOA Committee, advising, and adjunct professor reports. Due to Jason leaving the senate chair position, senate alternate Jeremy Kingma accepted a full senate position and was brought to the faculty to vote to appoint a new faculty alternate to senate. Eric Dematos, Assistant Professor of Photography and Fine Arts, stepped forward, his nomination was seconded and approved by acclamation. His nomination was seconded and approved by acclamation. Thank yous are very sincerely owed to Jason for his superlative Senate leadership to date, to Eric Dematos for stepping in to serve as an alternate, and to Matthew Nolan, who subsequently accepted the nomination to be the new Chair of Senate. As I said to Matthew when sending him a congratulatory note, he is the epitome of the saying, "If you want something done, ask the busiest person you know." Much appreciation, Matthew. In my chair report, I provided the faculty with an update on the NWCCU site visit meeting with the Faculty Assembly Executive Committee, as well as the summary of the information gleaned from the NWCCU exit session 10,000-foot view of the developing draft site visit report, as well as the timeline for receiving the official draft, which was received November 9th, NIC's subsequent opportunity to submit errors of fact, which was submitted last week, and the estimated date for the receipt of the final report anticipated to be received this week. I want to state my heartfelt thanks to the Faculty Assembly Executive Committee, and in particular Vice Chair John Gardunia, for the hours and hours of work to prepare the extensive document Faculty Assembly Executive Committee forwarded to the site visit team prior to the October 30th through November 1st visit. The advance preparation was appreciated and noted on by the site visit team. In old business, I was able to report that we now have a full slate of faculty on both the newly created Academic Freedom Committee, as well as the reorganized Faculty Course Evaluation Committee. Dean Sherri Simkins will work with both groups to establish charters, goals, meeting schedules, and initial work schedules. In new business, the faculty were retreated to a faculty celebrations presentation by Aiden McFall, Program Director and Assistant Professor of the Medical Laboratory Tech Programs. It was a beautiful presentation. The second item concerned the proposed schedule for the upcoming campus visit by the Collaborative Brain Trust, our strategic planning consultants, and a tentative listening session with faculty that may be possibly at noon on November 30th. The final item of business was a discussion about the October 25th Board of Trustees Statement concerning the constituency votes of no confidence. At that meeting, the Board, on a 3-0 vote, passed a statement in response to the constituency votes of no confidence. During the discussion before the vote, trustees Corkill, Wagner, and Zimmerman said that the statement was considered to be a start or a beginning. And Chair McKenzie clarified that a start would include that next steps needed, would be needed to hear from the constituencies again and have a dialogue. The faculty asked me to express their appreciation for this beginning gesture and look forward to the additional steps by the Board to consider the specifics outlined in the most recent statements from faculty, staff, students, and Senate in order to build back the confidence of the constituency groups at NIC. The faculty did have one request of the Board regarding the statement passed at the October 25th Board of Trustees meetings. The statement was not in the Board book for public access, nor did any of the constituencies receive a copy of the statement. So the faculty would ask that the statement be read in an open Board of Trustees meeting so that it can be included in the official record and for public access. We are anxious to continue as quickly as possible with these next steps spoken about on October 25th in order to address NWCCU areas of concern. Then after various announcements for good of the order, the meeting was adjourned. And with that, I am open for questions.
Just help me understand the request. You want us to read this October 25th statement? Or do you, if we just put it in the next board packet and say it was passed October 25th? What are you looking for?
So this, the statement that you voted on in October 25th as a response to 13 votes of no confidence was never read. It was passed out in paper copy to members of the, of the Board and to the Board Secretary. None of us ever received a copy of that, nor was it read out in the meeting before you voted on it.
But they were provided later. It was provided later.
So you say you, you weren't provided a copy during the meeting is what you're referring to?
And you voted on a statement that was supposed to be coming to the constituencies, but it was never read in the Board meeting. So until it appeared in the Board book, if you went looking for it, none of us actually ever received any copy of that.
Okay, that...
Or notice about what the statement said?
That was intended to get to you, and I think we will, we'll work on that. We heard.
Thank you.
She's gone, but I think we're good. That was Faculty Assembly. Moving to Staff Assembly.
Good evening, excuse me, Chair McKenzie, trustees, and President Swain. I wish this was No Shave November, but I just don't shave, so that's just what that is. Just our report from Staff Assembly. On Thursday, November 9th, Staff Assembly met and addressed the following items. We discussed with Staff Assembly the NWCCU visit that occurred on October 31st. Staff that met with NWCCU site visitors included the staff executive committees, as well as selected staff from Senate. The staff executive committee felt that the meeting with the NWCCU was productive and that our concerns were heard by the NWCCU site visitors. We also discussed college committee vacancies. We're still working on filling those. And then we also created an ad hoc Staff Assembly Committee to address any changes to the Staff Assembly bylaws. Do the trustees have any questions?
No, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to Senate, Matthew Nolan.
Chair McKenzie, Board of Trustees, Dr. Swain, fellow citizens. The Senate met one time on November 16th for our regular scheduled meeting. The first order of business at this meeting was to elect a Senate Chair to fill the position that was vacated by Jason Drosch. After nominations and some discussion, I was elected to represent the Senate as Chair for the rest of the year. We then opened nominations for parliamentarian, and Tom Hershey, a student representative, volunteered and was unanimously approved by vote. I would like to take the opportunity to extend a thank you to Jason Drosch for his unwavering service to our college and students. His knowledge of college operations and policy and his commitment to our students is unmatched. He is an irreplaceable asset to this institution. We approved the meeting minutes for our regular and special sessions for October without edits. We had two items to address under our old business. These were to conduct second reads on policy and procedure, 3.04, .01, with minor edits to sick leave brought to us by HR, or dealing with minor edits in sick leave brought to us by HR. After brief discussion, we voted to approve both of these without recommendation or change. There were two informational items under new business for discussion. The first was to review the Board of Trustees' response to constituent groups. That was passed on October 25th. The Senate recognizes the effort and the work that went into the response, and we consider it a great start in moving our college and community forward for the good of our students, and we look forward to future positive actions. The second informational item was a suggestion from the Board Policy Subcommittee for the Senate to consider renumbering college-specific policies under Section 2.01. It is our understanding that the goal of this action is to separate Board-specific policy from college operational policy to reduce confusion. After discussion, the Senate agreed that if the Board so chose to take action on this item, we would be more than willing to engage in working with the Board on the matter. Or matter. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I see people taking notes. Any questions? Or I'm sure you'll be hearing from people in due time.
Thank you.
I'm glad you got a copy. Moving to Dr. Swain, President's Report.
Thanks, Chair McKenzie. I'm going to start off by bringing to your attention, all the trustees had a copy of this. I think Chair McKenzie asked to get a listing of some of the recent activities and future activities that were taking place on campus because there, there's just a lot going on. And so you'll see on the, on the front side, these are recent activities. The backside are things that are coming up. And so just, I think there are copies at the back table. If you want to get a copy, that, that is available. We had, under, on the topic of accreditation, we did have a successful accreditation visit took place on the 30th, 31st, and 1st of November. The final report should be, is, is due by tomorrow. It might, or sorry, by Wednesday. Might get it sooner than that, but we're, it's, it's, it's coming to a conclusion here very quickly. We have under, under enrollment and recruiting, our data team has done a great job this, this year building data dashboards that allow us to really track enrollment numbers on a near-real-time basis. Over the course of the past couple of weeks, as we've kind of wrapped up the fall, we've started looking at the spring, and we tried to get significantly more details, drill down, and then look at the differences between the fall and the spring. So they just launched a new data dashboard starting today, and will probably have some more refinement. But those, those things take a lot of work. It pulls data from many different areas, and it's updated every morning at 5:00. So it's, it's, it's really a great tool for us to be able to track what's going on. As you, as you saw, the, the math competition, so the math competition, you think about, you know, having these activities, they are, they're part of our strategic enrollment initiative. When we're bringing on high school students onto campus for music, high school students for math, high school students on for, for science, we're reaching out to them and letting them know what's going on on campus, to see the facilities, and also let, let them know that there are scholarships available for them, and talk to them about things like the Idaho Launch Program that now provides significant tuition assistance towards their academic careers here. And, and this is really, going to a community college is the most efficient use of your, of your tuition dollars that you get in, in terms of assistance. So it's, it's a, it is a bigger effort than just having a math competition. There's more to it. Our dual credit team has started working with all the high schools. We had a, a pretty decent uptick in dual credit this fall. We're expecting that to increase in the spring. Again, these are, it's a strategic enrollment initiative. If we can get students to start taking classes here and then get them to stay here after they graduate from high school, finish their associate's degree, and then transfer on if they want, or if they finish it as a, in, in one of the career and technical education areas, that's, that's great. Sets them up for success. We, we've also started a, a really expanded apprenticeship program that started at the, at the Workforce Training Center, hired a recruiter to help recruit students into and explain to them what the apprenticeship program is, gives them an opportunity to learn while they earn. And we are experiencing about 100 more apprentices every year. So it's a, it's a great program for our community and, and for the Workforce Training Center. And we hosted our first-ever apprenticeship fair at the Parker Center. About a dozen businesses were out there trying to recruit apprentices to come start working for them. And about 200 people showed up wanting to be apprentices. So that was, that was a really nice first event and kind of a surprise. Lieutenant Governor Bedekey and Representative Mark Souter both showed up and walked around, got a tour of Parker Center, and met with all the companies that were there recruiting students. Of course, Lieutenant Governor Bedekey was pitching the Idaho Launch Program pretty hard. In terms of community stakeholder engagement, we had our legislative workshop. It's the first one we've had in a couple of years. Had that on November 13th. Got great help from Representative Jordan Redmond to pull North Idaho legislators in. I think we had seven or eight that showed up, and all five of the trustees were there. And we got to present to them the, the major issues that we're asking support for, which is the, an expanded police officer training program, a center out at the Parker Center, which would give them a driving course and a pistol range. So an expanded cybersecurity coverage and an opportunity to expand our health professions programs to better support the community. We had a scholarship dinner, alumni awards. There was a nice article in the Coeur d'Alene Press regarding the alumni awardees. And I actually have a couple of these I want to share. We have, here, there's a Coeur d'Alene Press-covered Casey Wilhelm, Ted Tedman, and Trustee Banducci presented at the ACCT Leadership Conference Congress in Las Vegas. It was a real nice presentation, pretty well attended. And while I'm at it, the, we had, you all remember, maybe remember, Louisa Rogers came in from Center for New Directions and showcased many of her students that are, most of them, I think, were single moms with anywhere from two to six kids that she was figuring out ways to help them complete their education. So she was recognized as a seroptimist, I think if I'm saying that correctly, pretty, pretty nice deal. And then another nice article about the career and technical educations that we got. So we've, we've had some, some significant positive press coverage for all the, all the great things that are happening. The Parker Center's trunk-or-treat program, this year we had about 400 people show up. Last year was 250. Again, that was a, it was an interesting event. Primarily, you know, the trick-or-treaters themselves are, are not the target audience. It was amazing how many parents showed up that had never been in Parker and didn't know about the career training opportunities that there, that were available out there for them to upscale their career. So it was a, it was a great opportunity for them to, to see the, to see Parker and, and what we can offer them. And then the last thing under community stakeholder stuff is the dent, our dental hygiene program had a special clinic for veterans. So they, the veterans get to come in and have their teeth cleaned and checked out for free, which was a real nice way to start Veterans Day weekend. The, the Workforce Training Center, we continue to work on programs where we can get the students that are taking no credit, the, the training courses that don't, are not associated with credit, get them combined into for-credit options so that students can go through those training programs and then apply for credit so they don't have to start over once they figure out that they can be successful as students. That's a, that's a big program that we're undertaking with our, between our Workforce Training Center and Career and Technical Education Center. Working on our transfer programs, revising our advising guidelines to make sure that we're lining our students up with, for success if they want to transfer to four-year programs, making sure that those articulation and transfer agreements are all aligned and that when a student completes their associate's degree here, that they don't have to repeat parts of their sophomore year or so forth when they get to a four-year institution. We want them to make the most use of their tuition dollars and, and their, make efficient use of their time. So we're also reviewing course alignments to make sure that they are directly tracking with our four-year partners. And then finally, we spent a bunch of time analyzing the website. And if you, if you do like I did and try to figure out what transfer programs are available here, and how do I plug into those and then transfer to U of I, or LC, or Idaho State, really tough to find. And so we're trying to find out all of the agreements we have. They're, they're kind of spread out. Some are formal, some are informal. Get all those collected, get them on one website so folks can go there. And if they want to be an engineer, they can click on that. If they want to go to U of I or, or ISU, they can figure out the most efficient way and the classes that align exactly with those programs. So that's a, that's a pretty big undertaking. Under Support for Athletes, we've had several meetings with, with SWAC presidents and the NGCAA. We had another one this morning, trying to make sure that all the SWAC schools align. There, there's nine schools now in SWAC. Two of them only have soccer. And so they're, so trying to line those up. And we're spread out all over the West. And so trying to organize it and maybe realign the, the conference so that we can cut back on some travel and, and be more efficient. And one of the challenges that, that faces us is the cost of travel. And the College of Southern Nevada... the cost of travel. And the College of Southern Nevada has formally requested to leave SWAC as a result of that. So they just announced that, I think, last Thursday. So some big news still with athletics. I will say, finish our discussion with athletics to say that the volleyball team, disappointing to them, but still quite an accomplishment, finished second overall in the NWAAC, which is a great accomplishment for a first-year coach, and a wonderful team that has done a great job undefeated throughout the season and just lost one game in their final game. Wrestling beat Umpqua on Thursday, and then on Saturday did very well in the Spokane Open, which we are now hosting, or co-hosting. We had one student place first in the, I think, 184-pound class, and then six wrestlers came out with places, which is a really remarkable turnout for our wrestling team. In terms of academic freedom, this is one of the issues that the trustees have asked me to look into. We're working with a couple of other institutions to create co-curricular programming on academic freedom and free speech. They're not the same thing. And bringing guest speakers onto campus to talk about those issues and the importance of both academic freedom and free speech on campus. We're revising our academic freedom policy to include student rights and responsibilities. And Committee of Faculty and Students is scheduled to meet last week in November to kick that off. We're incorporating student education models and new student orientation, including even Parker Center and our outreach centers in Sandpoint, to make sure that everybody is aware of those important aspects, including Workforce Training Center. Often, they're left out of that mix. We're developing some curriculum and programming around free speech and expression. Committee is working on hosting an NIC Listening, NIC Listens Program. There is a bigger Idaho Listens Program, where we're trying to bring voices in from around the community and bring those onto campus. There's a, there is a spring event to bring together employees, students, and the community to truly listen and hopefully make a difference in getting people together. We are also revising the faculty evaluation procedures to include course evaluations for every course. The faculty is, as Kathleen Milligreen noted, the committee is forming to look at the course evaluations, trying to make meaningful course evaluations that help instructors do a better job as instructors, but also making sure that students have a voice in every class. And then finally, onto strategic planning, we've established a strategic planning steering committee led by Sherri Simpkins and Sarah Garcia. Our contractor collaborator Brain Trust has met with our ACCT consultants and to review the board, how to engage the board in the strategic planning process. They met with the steering committee to ensure the board was engaged in the process. And they've scheduled their first onsite visit, the 29th of November through the 1st of December. And I think they're going to meet with all trustees, all of the, and most of the stakeholders individually, and as a committee. So we're looking forward to getting moving on the strategic planning process. And Chair McKenzie, that concludes my report, subject to your questions.
Any fellow trustees?
Could you just repeat, what were you saying about the faculty review deal again?
So currently, the tenured faculty are only reviewed every, once every three, one course every three years. And we're trying, we're changing that so that faculty reviewed, courses are reviewed, every course is reviewed every semester, and faculty get good feedback on that. But to do that, we want to have meaningful feedback that helps the faculty improve. So they're working on the faculty evaluation, or the course evaluation process that would provide them that feedback.
And that's for adjunct and permanent faculty?
Every course. So it's based on course, not faculty, right? So every course gets evaluated.
Chair, Chair McKenzie? I just want to make a comment that I think, I think it's great, a lot of those activities are going on. I think it's really good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Just a, just a thought. And it may appear, at least some for consideration, of the different rep rates between permanent faculty and adjunct faculty. But it sounds like it's broken down by course, where there may be overlaps, so it's complicated. But just food for thought, just for a reparate for that. Appreciate your work, and thank you.
Okay. Moving to informational items, Enrollment Fall Report. Dr. Swain, if you'd introduce Tammy Half.
Sure. So this is part of our recurring reports. And the October 15th was the cutoff date for our fall census. So after that, it takes a little while to kind of work the numbers. And so Tammy Half, who's our Dean of Enrollment Services, is going to present on the Fall Enrollment Report.
Good evening, Chair McKenzie, President Swain, community members, colleagues, and students. It's a pleasure to be with you again this evening to share details about our fall enrollment. First, I do want to provide you with a quick overview of our organizational chart. I am one of five deans who reports to interim Provost Duman. The directors of recruitment and admission, and financial aid, along with the registrar, the regional outreach center manager in Sandpoint, and the assistant to the dean, report to me. We have a total of 24 employees in enrollment services. As reported in October, our official headcount this fall is 3,981. Students enrolled in 34,840 credits, yielding a full-time equivalency of 2,322. Now, let's take a look at some of the specifics. Forty-four percent of our students are between the ages of 18 and 24. Twenty-six percent are 25 or older, and 30 percent are less than 18. Our oldest student is 91, and our youngest is 13. Thirty-eight percent of our students are male, and 62 are female. This split is consistent with last fall and on par with the national average. Forty percent of our students are receiving some type of financial support. Twenty-five are Pell eligible. To date, this fall, approximately 1 million has been awarded in foundation scholarships, and 3.6 million in federal/state aid. Four percent of our populations are veterans, with slightly more than 100 students utilizing GI Bill benefits. In addition, we have about 50 students who are utilizing dependent or spousal benefits to help cover their educational costs. Four percent of our population are student athletes participating in winter and fall sports. We continue to see more part-time versus full-time students. Thirty-five percent are attending full-time, taking 12 or more credits, and 65 percent are attending part-time, taking 11 credits or less. Thirty-nine percent of this fall's students are new and 61 continuing. This mirrors last fall's percentage. Fifty-four percent of our students are first generation. This means that neither parent has graduated with their bachelor's degree. I do want to note that dual credit and non-degree students are not included in this percentage. Nineteen percent of our students are choosing to take 100% of their classes online, while 29% are participating in distance education, which means their classes are online and hybrid. Hybrid classes combine face-to-face and online instruction, with a substantial portion of course-learning activities delivered online. And now, a little bit about our student types. Fifty-two percent of our students are enrolled in academic transfer programs. These students are usually planning to continue their education at a four-year college or university. The dual-credit program accounts for 32%, while 11% of our students are enrolled in career technical education programs. These programs allow students to enter the workforce upon completion. Five percent of our students are non-degree, usually indicating they are taking classes of interest. When comparing these percentages to last year, there are minimal changes. Career technical education and non-degree represent the same portion of our pie, while academic transfer decreased 1% and dual-credit increased 1%. Now, a little bit about our residency. Eighty-nine percent of our students are Idaho residents. Eighty-five percent of these students are from our service region, the five northern counties, which consists of Bennoah, Bonner, Boundry, Kootenay, and Cheshawn. Kootenay County accounts for 69% of our Idaho enrollment, is up 2% from last fall. Additionally, 5% of our students are Washington residents, and 3% are participating in the Western Undergraduate Exchange Program. States currently part of this program include Alaska, Arizona, California, Colorado, Hawaii, Montana, Nevada, New Mexico, North and South Dakota, Oregon, Utah, and Wyoming. The other 3% are from states that aren't part of the WICHE program or Washington. Now, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about top feeder high schools. This year, I've divided this information into three categories. The first slide you are seeing here is the list of top feeder high schools for students who are participating in our dual-credit program. While headcount has remained flat, Lake City and Coeur d'Alene High Schools remain the top feeders, and students' participation from Lakeland, St. Mary's, and Kootenay Bridge Academy have increased this fall. Here's a look at our top 10 feeder high schools for students who graduated in 2023 and enrolled this fall. Post-falls continues to hold the top spot again this year with 58 students. The largest decrease is seen in Coeur d'Alene High School numbers, and the largest increase is associated with Bonners Ferry High School, which tripled enrollment. And now, let's look at the top feeder high schools for students who did not graduate in 2023 and are not part of our dual-credit program. Again, post-falls tops the list with GE coming in at a close second. I do want to point out that the GDD number is for all GED students, not just those participating in the program at NIC. From last fall, the largest gain is seen in homeschool numbers, and the largest decrease is associated with Timberlake. I would like to thank the IR team for their great work in providing me with data for the tonight's presentation. I look forward to coming to you with the Spring 2024 enrollment in March. And this concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Trustee Wagner.
Yeah, I don't really have a question, but it was a very clear presentation that I thought was very beneficial.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
All right, moving to Development Report. Dr. Swain.
Development Report, sure. So Rayel Anderson is prepared to give you Development Report. This is separating her dual role as development from foundation, so this is just about development.
Thank you, Dr. Swain, for the opportunity to present about the Development Department. Tonight, I'm going to focus specifically on grants development, which is one of the main areas of the grant, or the Development Department work. You'll see by the organizational structure that the Development Department reports directly up through the college president's office. And my slide is pretty faint, but you'll see, in addition to development work, I also have other responsibilities. So the Development Department covers more than just grants development. Our department works alongside the administration of the college, faculty, and staff to support and coordinate institutional grant procurement on behalf of the institution, on behalf of North Idaho College. We collaborate with NIC leadership, departments, and divisions to assess needs and secure external grants to meet the needs, all consistent with NIC's goals and priorities. We research state, federal, and private grant funding sources, and we strive to match those sources with NIC needs. We cultivate and steward relationships with grant funders on a continuous basis. We provide the pre-award grant planning and proposal development, writing and submission support. We also provide post-grant award support as needed. And I would be remiss to say that we coordinate closely with the Office of Finance and Business and the appropriate college employees, departments, and divisions throughout the entire grants process, and for each opportunity. Some results. You'll see that the grants development results really reflect the work of divisions and departments and employees on this campus. So for the last five years, fiscal year 19 through 23, you'll see in that first column, on average, we apply annually for 30 competitive grants. On average, the last five years, we've requested over 1.8 million in external support. On average, we've received 15 of those 30 average grant requests the last five years. And on average, we've received at least a million annually in external grant support for programs and services here at North Idaho College. Year-to-date, I'm really proud of the NIC employees and departments and divisions. Year-to-date, July 1 to current, 11 grants have been submitted externally, totaling 1,875 and some change. And nine of those have been awarded, exceeding the $1.4 million mark. So to highlight the good work of the college employees and the leadership of the college, I just want to highlight fiscal year '24, some great highlights on these grants. And again, the employees. NIC employees seek ways to enhance educational excellence and student success at the college. And they do this as part of their daily work. It's not an extra reward for them. And so they seek external resources to elevate the level of work that they do, all for students and community. So this last year, in the last several months, one of the highlights here is the Career and Technical Education Program expansion and modernization. NIC is the beneficiary of $1,267,310 for seven grants, all related to equipment in the career and technical education area. The funder is the Idaho Division of Career and Technical Ed, and it's specifically the leading Idaho 2.0 grant. And the seven programs that you see in cardinal red there are the seven programs that are receiving equipment this year. So congratulations to them. In addition, I just wanted to highlight, North Idaho College is the mine safety training provider for the entire state of Idaho. And the Idaho Mine Safety Training Grant of $164,011 has been awarded. And NIC, through the Workforce Training Center, provides that training throughout Idaho to miners, operators, and contractors. The funder is the U.S. Department of Labor's Mine Safety and Health Administration grant. And so what's next? Dr. Swain has mentioned several times about the Tech Hub 2.0 grant, so our department is supporting the efforts there. In addition, the Trio Department is posing for their five-year renewal grant in the spring, so we're providing support there. Dr. Swain reported, we had applied for a C-Campus grant, which is basically childcare for students. And we were unsuccessful in getting that grant, but we are regrouping and looking to reapply in the future. And we're always looking for other childcare support service opportunities through external grants. And then we are continually evaluating opportunities for external resources to leverage NIC's ability to scale up and capacity build where we can. That's the end of my report, Dr. Swain. I'll turn it back to you, and can I answer questions?
Seeing none, we're going to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rayel. Recruitment and marketing, Dr. Swain.
So this is going to be a tag team with Tom Green and Tammy Half. We'll talk about recruiting and marketing. I'm looking for Tom. That's you, Tom.
Greens, Chair McKenzie, trustees, and NIC community, thank you for taking the time to come out tonight. Before I discuss our marketing efforts, I'd like to give a quick overview on what my department does. Compared to other departments on campus, communications and marketing is more of a jack-of-all-trades department. We have a ton of services we've formed that a lot of folks aren't aware of. So I'd like to take this opportunity just to run through a few of to take this opportunity just to run through a few of them. Here's a good visual overhead. Let's look at our org chart that shows our three main functions. We've got the website, marketing, and communications. A few of the things we handle are the college's press releases, media inquiries, accreditation posts, flyers, newsletters, ad buys, ads, videos, all government relations, photography, event planning, parades, swag, internal communications like the Knell, snow days, and all social media. We do this for athletics, in addition to main campus, CTE, and NSC at Sandpoint. It really keeps us hopping. Earlier tonight, Tammy told you about the who and the what related to recruitment. Now, I'd like to tell you about the how. Here are just a few of the tactics we've adopted recently. This year, we made a sustained push for enrollment through targeted weekly email campaigns. Communications were catered to individual audiences to get them to take that next step to enroll. In conjunction with email campaigns, mass weekly voice messages were sent out to audiences to remind them about enrollment. We've dedicated more time to increased video content on our platforms. These include student stories and testimonials showing why NIC is the right choice. We are continually reviewing our messaging and online content to simplify, simplify, simplify. We've been adjusting to make enrollment steps and pass to a degree easier to follow. These efforts have paid off. Some of our successes we've seen with these new tactics show up in increased web traffic and content engagement. So far in 2023, ten-point-three percent of our overall web traffic has been from digital marketing. This includes display ads, organic and paid social media, and other digital marketing channels. Part of that traffic comes from a ten-point-one percent year-over-year increase in web traffic coming from just our social media platforms. The reason this has gone up that much comes partially through a hundred-and-fifty-five percent average increase in content interaction across our social media platforms. In short, people are engaging more with the content we post, and it's paying off. For upcoming improvements, we're going forward, we're working on improving our current automated email marketing process. This is just another tool that it helps to bring more awareness of NIC to very targeted groups and lead potential students into the enrollment funnel more naturally. We're modernizing and streamlining this process. Another area we're actively working on is optimizing our web content. This includes the work we're already doing to simplify and cater content to the audience as well as implementing pages and keywords to improve our SEO, and that should make NIC's pages pop up even more often when people are looking for relevant info. And now, I'm gonna turn it over to Tammy again. Thank you.
Hello. Again, I just want to provide you with a quick update as far as what's next. Right now, Spring 2024 recruitment and registration is well underway. October thirtieth opened registration for continuing students. Efforts to assist this population include registration pop-up events across campus. We will also be going into high schools to assist dual credit students. As Tom mentioned, we are texting, we are emailing, we are contacting students via phone, we have messages on our web, we have messages in Canvas, so hopefully, our reminders are connecting with those students that are continuing with us. For new students, registration started on November thirteenth. Again, ongoing communication with those folks. We have geo-fencing campaigns that are launching. We are weekly reaching out to them via text emails. We launched booking campaigns that allow students to get back with us quickly and schedule times to meet with advising and registration. We have a lofty goal, but we have no doubt that we can meet that. We have set the bar at thirty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty credits to be generated during spring, which would mirror what we did this fall. Fall 2024 is well underway. We have a large, robust recruitment committee. We meet on a weekly basis, discussing our recruitment strategies and our target markets. We have been out with many, many high school visits, helping them through enrollment processes in Idaho, Washington, and also Montana. College fairs have been many in Washington and across the state here in Idaho. We are reaching out to our business and community partners to see how we might be able to work with them to offer classes needed. Workshops have been offered on Idaho Launch and the benefits of the program and how we can assist them here at NIC, and we continue to look at ways that we can streamline our enrollment processes to make it easier for students to come to NIC. Communication with potential students to walk them through the admission processes continues, and we are really looking forward to finalizing our recruitment strategies and our target markets for fall 2024. And that concludes our report. Are there questions for either Tom or I?
Seeing none, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving to security update, Dr. Swain.
All right, so Alex has been working with, he'll tell you the name of the organization, school safety folks at the state level to do a safety audit and prepare a report, so I'll turn it over to Alex to give you an update.
I'm back tonight for a quick report since in September, I promised I would be here in November with an update on the security audit work with Idaho Office of School Safety. We intended on having that work done by today, but it is not done, but we are making significant progress in that, and excited to share with the board however we, Dr. Swain wants me to do that, the complete audit with recommendations and commendations coming soon. I can report, we did conduct our semester lockdown drill last week. A survey is out to all students and staff and faculty to give feedback on how that went and how we can improve communication, so I will also be able to report on that. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Alex. All right, looking at the consent agenda item, I would like a motion to pull off the regular meeting minutes. I'd just like an opportunity to discuss with the secretary on some wording, and I think we can come back at the next regular meeting for minor changes on those. So, if hearing, if someone would make that motion to take the regular meeting minutes out of the consent agenda items and we proceed to approve the rest of them, that'd be wonderful. That'd be item B. So, if someone make the motion to take item B out of the consent agenda items into a regular item, that would be wonderful. Please say so moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Wagner. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Trustee Zimmerman, thank you very much. I think we're good for discussion if people are fine just hearing what I said. Appreciate your willingness to do this. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing four votes and aye, the motion passes. Moving back to the consent agenda item, all those in favor of passing the single consent agenda item of A, say aye.
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 All right, well, actually, I don't think we need a vote, but we're good with that one. Moving to, we'll just skip the board regular meeting minutes, and they'll show up at the next board meeting. Looking at unfinished business, we're actually gonna skip these agenda items. Moving to board officer elections. Is there a motion? I think we'll start with the chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Corkle, you're recognized.
I would like to nominate Mike Wagner for the chair.
I second the motion.
Hearing no discussion?
Well, I'll begin, Chair McKenzie.
Trustee Corkle, or Zimmerman, yes, Zimmerman.
Thank you. With our most recent visit from the commission, it's, and what we've gotten in July, it's apparent that the board leadership and board governance continues to be a problem. I think that we need a change in the board chair, and not just change for the sake of change, but I truly believe that Mike has done such a great job on the policy subcommittee. His leadership has been outstanding. He's come to every meeting prepared. He has a great demeanor. He can grab us all together and develop some consensus. He has great experience with his management, and I think he'll do a great job and lead us through this most difficult time, this next year, so I'd love to see him be the board chair.
Obviously, I'm interested in doing this. I think I can add some value here. Our college thrives on growth, learning, and inclusivity, and we need unity and collaboration among the board members and the administration. So, and we need free speech to be embraced. I was pleased, Dr. Swain, when you talked about you're working on that. That's important. Frankly, I had put together almost a year ago a set of goals, and one goal was to get us going in the direction of maybe having ten thousand students. That'll take a while, but we do want NIC to flourish, right? And there's lots of strength in the school, there's lots of strength in the faculty, and there's lots of folks around here who need to go to school, so let's see what we can do to push that forward, especially talking about what you're doing at Parker, and that's an area of interest for me because I was a production welder for a while, and I've done machining, and I was a mechanic and all that before I went off and got my four-year degree. And I just realize how important that is to the community to have those opportunities for folks to try alternative things and maybe go back to a four-year school or maybe stay in those careers. And then, so I think we need to go forward with a shared positive vision, and so if you're interested in me doing that, then you need to vote that way, and away we'll go, okay?
Hearing no other discussion, the only discussion I'll just say is I do not wish to defend, but I'm always happy to explain, and I'll just say, Trustee Wagner, I think you would make a great chair.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work you've done.
All right, hearing no other discussion. Corkle, Banducci, now would be your time to say something.
I'm sure people think this was pretty cute, but here's who I was gonna nominate anyway, so it's all good. It wasn't gonna be me.
Trustee Corkle.
No, I'm good.
I'll think you're pretty good.
Okay. All those in favor of Trustee Wagner as chair, say aye.
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 All right, that, the chair votes aye too. You have five-oh for your chairmanship, sir.
Okay.
So, come, come take a seat.
Probably will need to recess for a couple of minutes to do the transfer, but we'll finish the election of officers. So, we need a nomination for vice chair.
I'll nominate Trustee Banducci. Is there a second? Sorry, I'm not chair anymore. Sorry, chair.
Okay, I guess I can second that.
We go to discussion?
No discussion?
I think you'll make a great vice chair.
Okay, so, call for the vote?
Call for the vote. Aye.
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 Say nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, vice chair is Todd Banducci. Okay, so now, we need a secretary treasurer. I'd like a nomination for secretary treasurer.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, I did. I said aye. I wrote the tie. So...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Trustee McKenzie for the secretary treasurer.
Okay. Do here any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Ayes?
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Well, I don't need to vote, so, nays?
I think there was all five votes aye.
Yep, that's it, all five, okay? So, let's see.
Maybe we could liaison to the foundation.
Can I, can I have a five-minute recess to get transferred the information we need to do here, okay? And we'll come back, and we don't have the timer anymore, right?
Seven forty.
Say seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, okay? Sounds good, thank you. Seven forty-five, okay, sounds good, thank you. All right, let's get going, folks. It's about ten to eight. We'd like to keep going here so we can all go home earlier than sometimes we have in the past, right? It's been pointed out to me, oh, go ahead, thank you. It's been pointed out to me that there's two additional positions that are not officers, but since we're officially supposed to reorganize, we need to complete that. So we need to have a liaison to K-Tech. Do we have any nominations for a liaison to K-Tech?
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Do we have, we have a nomination, or is that the way we do that?
He's looking to be recognized to speak.
Go, you, go ahead.
You recognize me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Trustee McKenzie for K-Tech liaison.
Cool, I second myself.
Okay, do we have any others? Okay.
Nobody seemed anxious, so.
Call for the vote? Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
A, nays?
Would only be you.
I certainly support that, so that's five zero. So we're fine, okay. Then we need a liaison to the Foundation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Terry Zimmerman for liaison to the Foundation.
A second?
Well, I'll second myself then, I guess, if nobody else wants to.
Discussion?
I disagree, I don't think that would be a good mix, but that's it.
Call for the vote? Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nays?
Aye.
What, what did you say?
I said I voted nay.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I was in the affirmative of the nay time, so.
Okay.
Three to one.
I'm voting, I'll vote nay.
That's, it's two to two.
No, he voted, he voted in favor. Mike, Mike voted in favor.
You have two, two ayes, two nays.
No, I, I didn't vote, yet.
So you'd be the, you'd be the tiebreaker then?
I'd be the tiebreaker. Okay, do we have? Because I was, I was gonna abstain at this point.
If you abstain, then it would fail.
Yes, I'll abstain for now.
I'll make a motion for Trustee Banducci to be Foundation Rep.
I think that's not, there's an issue with that.
No, there's not. I, I will speak up, though, because there's been allegations and assertions to that effect which are not true.
Don't know what you're talking about. Do not incur liability for the college.
Would you, Mr. Chair, would you make a second for discussion?
Do we have a second for discussion?
Incorrect. Go for it.
Are we gonna get the crowd under control?
I've looked at it too.
Let's, let's keep it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Let's keep the negative comments down, please. So we don't have a second?
We, we do have a second.
I'll second myself, then.
Okay, discussion?
For comment.
Discussion?
Comment and discussion. Again, contrary to allegations and assertions, there's nothing that prohibits me from being the liaison for the Foundation. And pull out the paperwork and look, and you all can just take that one and chew on it. But I don't want to be the liaison to the Foundation, anyway, because I'm really not inclined to be there with so many of my good friends. So I will decline that, thank you. I will decline it, and I will make the recommendation that Trustee McKenzie continues on as the liaison to the Foundation.
So you move, move for that?
Yes, he did.
All right, Banducci moves, he needs a second.
Do we have a second?
So, so is this a new?
I'll second it.
A new vote for McKenzie?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not, okay.
I declined, I declined, so it immediately goes back to, I made a new nomination.
He'll need a second.
I need a second?
I'll second it. For a discussion?
Any discussion? No discussion, okay. Call for the vote? Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Hmm. Okay. I think I'll have to vote aye.
Okay.
Thank you for the responsibility.
Okay, let's move on.
We have Booster Club, or is that, are we still keeping with that?
Booster Club is not an official position.
Oh, okay.
It's not officially a non-position.
Okay, so, let's see. The next item is the fiscal audit 2023. Voting, meetings have been occurring today. I have a proposed motion here. As Chair, I'm requesting a motion to accept the audit as presented with wording modifications on Note Five with, with regards to the Sandpoint Center lease escalating wording being included and aligned verbiage.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that Trustee McKenzie and I attended that audit meeting this afternoon, and for the eighth year in a row, there were no changes, amendments, corrections, or anything on it. So the finances of the College are extremely strong, and the Department is doing a very good job.
And, and I'd like to say that, too. I went through all the numbers myself, the first twenty pages, and all the summary, and I was pretty impressed.
Yep, it was a great meeting, and if I maybe recognize Chair and point out some good risk buy-down things that people were already considering, which is wonderful, and looking forward to hearing how it goes, so.
Okay, so we need to vote.
Call for the?
Call for the vote. Ayes?
Aye.
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 Aye, five, that's good. Motion passes, okay.
Did you get that, Suzy?
What?
I just want to make sure Suzy got the vote, okay.
Yeah, it's important. There's, as I remember, last year, there's a legal requirement to get the audit approved within a certain number of days.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so then Board Policy Subcommittee. We have, let me look at my notes here from the meeting this morning, if I may. This book is filling up, let me tell you. Okay, so we looked at three. One, we cited on memberships to defer at this point. And then we, as we've discussed in the, in, even some of the folks.
Not defer the memberships, but their president.
We're gonna prepare a presentation and with.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Would we be tabling it, then?
No, no, no. No, no.
It's not tabled, it's just, we're gonna prepare and present it at the December Board Meeting with a policy. We, we have a draft policy that was submitted this morning to the committee, but it's not in policy format, so we're gonna get it in policy format for first read at the December meeting.
Right, and, so anyway, there were, a proposal, Dr. Swain modified it some, asked for some more input, and then we'll come back, probably nine o'clock on the twentieth of December, and then if we can, get it to the, get it finished, get it to the Board Meeting on the twentieth, and keep right on going, okay? And that's a new policy. And then I'm working on the civility policy. We wanted a little more finite suggestions on making sure the Board Meetings and et cetera ran more smoothly. So, and in terms of being polite with each other and those kinds of things. So I'll be working on that with the ACCT folks, and then we'll bring that to the next meeting also on, at nine o'clock, and then.
Chair Wagner?
Go from there, go ahead.
I thought that we were going to work on a, a resolution.
Right, right, correct.
Rather than a policy.
Yeah, we, we discussed it as a policy, decided not to do it as a policy, and that's one of the reasons we had to move kind of the way we were doing things. And so it will probably be a resolution that the, we'll ask folks to sign up for.
I, I believe we have to ask the Board to provide direction to the Subcommittee to put forth a resolution as part of the Subcommittee's work, rather than a policy. Isn't that what we discussed this morning?
Right, yeah, we, we need to change the scope of the Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee, to allow us to work on resolutions also.
So I think that's just in form of a motion.
Would you like to provide a motion for the?
I'll make the motion that the Subcommittee be working on a resolution for civility in lieu of a policy for civility.
I thought we were gonna just.
Do we want it specific, or do we want it just in general? How do you want to do that?
I recommend you just do it in general.
In general, saying that we can include resolutions.
We can include.
Because there may be more, too, right?
Okay.
Resolutions are supposed to be a start, as we just heard tonight.
Yes, we'll do a resolutions to be included in policy.
Okay, thank you. Was that, do we have a second on that?
Can I, can I take a stab at the motion? Just a motion to expand the Board Policy Subcommittee to include authority to draft resolutions.
Think I said that, but that works.
Okay.
So you, you wanna make it a second?
I'll make the second.
All right. Discussion? Call for the vote? Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays?
I think they both ayes.
Aye, okay. Hear that, okay? And I would have done aye also, so that makes five zero, so the motion passes. Let's see, and then we have two more policies that were in the Board Packet. No change to Trustee Emeritus status and a new policy 2.0114 for creation, revision, or elimination of internal Board Governance Policy and Procedure. In other words, we got into a situation where some of the, some of the policies are very old. So what this has in it is a schedule to continually review them every so often, not do too much at once, and make sure that they are kept up to date. Okay, so I think what we need is a motion to continue without changes the policy 2.0109 trustee emeritus status. That's the last one of the ones that we require that NWCCU wanted. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
We're taking a motion to, like, approve that we're not changing?
First reading, yeah.
Yeah, just the first, yeah, we can call it just the first reading.
We don't need to do that.
We don't have to approve them for first reading. Just we solicit comments, right, typically.
Okay, and so.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Are we, we're designated this as a first reading tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what we're doing is we're having discussion, we're soliciting inputs, and then if something comes up between now and the next meeting, people could provide inputs then, and I know you guys will have more meetings with the Policy Subcommittee. So there's no motion that's required at this time, sir, I don't believe.
Right. That's my understanding, yes. Okay. So any input?
I think we're ready to move to Tab Five even.
Okay, so, um. So no input on for A, B, or C plus, in addition to what we've already done, correct?
Are we on C now, sir?
B, I thought. I think we need to be on B. I was hoping that, I was hoping for any input on 2.0114, which is the new policy to create and update a process for policies.
Mr. Chair, I know, I don't know how about everybody else, but I just got my board tonight, my book tonight. I had it electronically, which I was able to glance at, but I got the paper book for me to really work with today, or tonight, actually. So I know I haven't had much time to really look at it.
Right.
So when would you like the inputs by? Would you, did you want it within a week or something, when does the Subcommittee?
Two weeks, since the Subcommittee, next Subcommittee meeting is scheduled for the nine, nine o'clock on the twentieth. December.
I think you have two options to comply with the open meeting laws, since we're getting into three trustees. We've already crossed this bridge, we don't want to repeat it, so.
I'm not coming to the meeting.
If you, if you're not coming to the meeting, get your written things.
You can come to the meeting, you can, that's the proper way to do it, if you want to offer any.
Or you can provide input to.
Or you can provide your input, and it goes into the agenda.
Because we are noticing this as a special meeting, correct?
And it goes into the agenda packet of the Subcommittee noticed meeting, so everyone gets to see your inputs, it's basically they get to observe the conversation, the formation of policy. And if you want to have verbal discussion and be able to answer Q and A's, then you show up or zoom in.
If I may question Mr. Chair?
Yes.
President Swain, who were you saying to Kristen?
You could send it to Suzy.
Suzy?
Yeah.
Right, that's, we got into that before, thanks for reminding me. Okay, so we're done with C, I think we're done with B. And I think we were, were we going to discuss? We've already talked about C, do we need any more comments about C? I don't think so.
I think just proceed forward of Subcommittee, and President's going to come back working with ACCT for a policy on college memberships.
Right.
Be one or two sentences, this initial leading thought.
Okay, and then continuous professional service contracts, would you like to talk about that?
Yeah, I just had a motion prepared. So thank you to the Senate and the participatory governance people for your constructive feedback. It was enlightening, took me down a trail of procedures and referencing what you're talking about for learning more about participatory governance, it's educational. And so we drafted a new revision, and I got a motion here to refer this edited RFP policy version to the President for putting through the participatory governance process in adherence to college policies and procedures. So that's my motion, sir, before the board.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it, but for discussion.
Discussion?
If you recognize Banducci.
Could you repeat that motion, please?
Sure, it's a motion that we drafted together at the Subcommittee meeting with the President and everyone. The motion is to refer this edited RFP policy that we provided to, at the Subcommittee meeting this morning, so I don't really have a copy for you right here. Policy version to the President for putting through the participatory governance process in adherence to college policies and procedures.
Thank you.
So, but we're on to discussion, I think Banducci wants to be recognized.
Okay. Go ahead, you're recognized.
As we develop this policy and the attendant procedures that go with it, I want to make sure that we have fully codified what the timelines are going to look like on these continuous professional service contracts and the renewals. I know we've been piecing this together, at least for the eleven years I've been on the board, and I think we've come a long way from where we started, where it was a bit arbitrary as to when we were looking at some of these different contracts and everything. So first, I'd love to, this is kind of a sidebar, know where I can go look to see where these contracts are listed and when their renewals will come. So, and I want to also understand how we're putting those out for people and how they can have an expectation of when those will come around. One of the things that, was the examples I've used previously, and it was one of my concerns, is we weren't getting these out to a broad enough audience for people to bid on them, and people weren't aware of them, and we didn't have as much, as a notice regarding them that got out. So we had a number of vendors that were bidding on these. And then we had, for example, we had a problem where a couple of our houses weren't properly winterized over on Military Drive, and it created some pretty extensive damage and some pretty hefty claims. And those claims helped contribute, along with the big windstorm, to why we had so many problems with our insurance and the property and casualty. Yeah, go ahead cough, because you guys want to blame it on the trustees, but it was the property and casualty side of the insurance that was the problem. And yet, I have no idea when or if we reviewed that professional service contract, if we stayed with that vendor, if we didn't. So. It's part of our. Very mature out there, very mature. Just trying to make sure we all understand, you know, there's causation, there's things that happen and the consequences. Trees fell down, houses leaked, pipes broke, insurance didn't like the claims. Yeah, so, okay, 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 come on.
So why, anyway.
We can clear the room, I'll be happy to make a motion to the board chair, and you all can walk out and go watch it zoom. Clear the room.
Let's, let's focus back on this, where we just, we obviously want to discuss, and you're talking about some of the history, et cetera. What is the go-forward plan? I think you talked about that.
Go-forward plan is we have a drafted RFP policy, and I think trustee Banducci is referring to the several requests, and I think there's a website link out there that would.
Procurement and contracts.
If you could request on behalf of the board that that be provided to all trustees, I think that would help.
Okay. So. Were, that, exactly what did you want?
The schedule for when RFPs are coming out for issuance. For example, I think our audit people are eight years out of a two, five-year things. I think they had a five-year and then another five-year. So just, there should be, as I understand it, my impression is there should be a website indicating that an audit RFP website is coming, audit RFP is coming out in two years, just that mere fact of information, along with our, maybe, property management rentals, when's that coming up for RFP?
NIC.edu/contracts and NIC.edu/procurement, there.
I can, I can believe it, but the board has talked about it, and I don't recall any email essentially being provided to the board.
So we just need the links, please send us the links, all, everybody on the board, okay? And you agreed to do that, fine. Okay, anything else?
I think we still have a, we're in discussion for my motion, sir, so if we call for a vote.
Call for the vote? Ayes?
Aye.
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 Four ayes, I would also have done aye. So motion passes, no use for a nay. Okay, so. We're skipping the NIC memberships. Trustee McKenzie, could you talk about the ACCT National Legislative?
Yeah, thank you, sir, for being recognized. And as part of our board goals that we approved a while ago, there was part of, there was an action item kind of encouraging each trustees to participate in, in different things, whether it be graduation or different activities. And one of those that the board discussed at the workshop was participating at a national level at ACCT conference. This one's going to be in DC in early February, and just as a board to just, I think we're all supportive of participating, I think the President is planning to go, I see him head nodding, and I intend to go, and just I think we're, who's interested in going? And is this, want to remind everyone that we have our board goals that we're trying to fulfill? And by participating and attending, it would be advancing your education as a trustee.
The dates are the fourth through the seventh of February. And I don't know that everybody has to sign up tonight, but if you could get word back to Suzy, then we can book the rooms through the, through the event and make sure that we get the cheap rates and all that, coordinate flights, so. Again, if.
Are we, do, does, do you folks know whether you would be planning on going?
That's too far in the future for me.
Okay.
A little more time go by, and then I'll decide.
Okay, cool.
We'll get, we'll get information out and let everybody know when the registration is due and all that sort of thing, so.
Okay, good. All right. There's some additional ACCT assistance that's being requested, could you?
That was yours, right, the conflict resolution?
Right, but I, I would like trustee.
I'm looking for my motion right here.
McKenzie to address that.
If we could just talk about, to the January one, if you could buy me a couple of minutes, I'd appreciate that. If you skip down to the, I think we're looking to move the January meeting up.
Yeah, okay, so want to skip down to moving the board meeting to another day and the training? So do we have a proposed, a proposed date for that?
Well, it's, maybe share what the issue is, and that is, the JFAC? Well, so, so JFAC is probably going to be the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. That Ed week is probably the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. The current board meeting is on the thirty-first. The problem is, the thirtieth, thirty-first, and the first of February are the dates of the NWCCU's their meeting out in Seattle, and we're going to have to go out and present one of those days. And so there's a high probability that a couple of folks are going to be gone, the thirty, thirty-first, or first. So we can't, can't do that, can't back it up because of the legislature of the week before. So it really puts us the week of the fifteenth through the nineteenth is a primary date for the meeting, which I would suggest the seventeenth. So it's a Wednesday.
And that's just a regular evening meeting, right?
Would be a regular evening meeting, just change the.
Regular, this, the regular, list of regular board meetings. Any further discussion?
We're also looking at the training meeting, too, correct?
Correct.
So we'll tackle that after the board meeting?
Correct.
So, what was your question?
About the training session?
No, trustee Zimmerman, you were talking about the ACCT training.
Yeah, the board training that we go through, so we'll figure out when the board meeting, Board of Trustees meeting is, and then we'll go for the training.
Okay, what, I volunteer to talk, call them and work that issue with them.
Okay.
And my motion kind of goes to that, just if we could go back to the additional assistance, sir, if I may be recognized?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're recognized.
So just, there's a motion to authorize the board chair to select the January consultant, and additionally, the ACCT training dates in consultation with NIC's President. Just, we're making a different change, and a little change in different dates and that kind of stuff. So just giving somebody authority to make that decision and work together, so.
So you're going to handle the, the date for the ACCT training in January?
You are, sir, you're board chair.
Okay, right, okay.
We'll coordinate that.
In consultation with your NIC President, but you have, you have the authority to do that in consultation, and you're going to do it in consultation with NIC's President. So that's the motion, motion to authorize the board chair to select the January consultant, and additionally, the ACCT training dates in consultation with NIC's President.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Discussion? Call for the vote? Ayes?
Aye.
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 No nays? Motion passes.
So we settle on the seventeenth, is that?
I, my understanding is we have settled on the seventeenth for the next board meeting, and one in January. Okay?
January, you say?
Seventeenth? It's a Wednesday?
And when are we going to JFAC?
I believe it's the following week.
Okay.
Okay, so I, we've jiggled around here, and obviously, the trustee McKenzie was the one that was prepared to do this. So we're going to skip the response
Yes.
to constituent groups, so we're down to remarks for the good of the order.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize?
Want to correct an oversight, Nick now a couple times put out lists of folks involved with NIC in honor of Veterans Day, and I'd like to recognize you, you were omitted from that list for your long and honorable service in the Army. So thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
And for yours in the Air Force.
Likewise, that can be said about you, too, sir, so.
Yes.
You're off the list, too, so. I do have remarks, if I may be recognized, that I'm going to need a new name tag, so it doesn't say board chair anymore, so. With a big, big first, just so people can read it, so.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thanks for your patience, and the switch over here, and I'll work on this, and we're adjourned.